You're tuned into Inside Lowell, Inside Lowell Podcast, brought to you in part by Washington Savings Bank, serving the greater Lowell community for over 130 years. Make the switch now to Washington Savings Bank. Reverie 73, Lowell's number one cannabis shop. Elevate your cannabis experience at Reverie 73. Hafner's, heating and cooling homes and businesses for nearly a century. Hafner's, it kicks. And by Boston North Company, restaurant and retail solutions for your business. That's Boston North. And now, time for another Inside Lowell Podcast. Inside Lowell. If Lowell is your home, this is your place.
Hello again, everybody, and welcome to another Inside Lowell Podcast. I am your host, Teddy Panos, coming to you from the Inside Lowell Studios located in historic, beautiful downtown Lowell. Got a special guest joining us here in studios, candidate for Lowell City Council in District 2, the Centerville neighborhood of the city. Going to bring him in in a quick second. Just want to thank all of our sponsors. You heard some of them mentioned off the top there for helping to make this podcast, all of our Inside Lowell podcasts, and for that matter, all of Inside Lowell possible wouldn't be able to reach the audience we do without your help. So, thank you for that. And of course, thank you to our audience. Now over 100,000 strong on our website, a Facebook reach of over 400,000. We just reached those milestones late last week. So, I want to thank all of you for helping us with our growth as well. Of course, our show topics and our guests are also part of that growth. And joining us here this morning is one of those guests, as I mentioned, candidate for Lowell City Council in the Centerville neighborhood. Not a first time candidate. He's run before for office. Marty Hogan is joining us here.
Good morning, Teddy.
Good morning. How are you, sir?
I'm good. This is a beautiful studio.
Thanks. I appreciate it. Wait till we decorate it. Put some curtains up and whatnot.
Maybe some pictures, but it's white. It works. But it's great. It's wonderful. I haven't been in here and this is amazing.
Well, glad to have you here. Running again, this is now your, your third council run, right?
So, I ran at large. I ran against Cory and Rob last time. And going at it again, as I said to you, when I texted you, you texted me when you found out I had pulled papers. And someday, we'll find out how you get that information so fast. But no, I'm just kidding.
I know it's public. Check with the election office every day.
I literally just went over the threshold and you texted me. I'm like, son of a, what? So, basically, I think two years ago, and I talked to a lot of people about this, it was a very weird election where people weren't used to the type of election it was. We were all at large before. There are positives to all at large. There are positives to all district. There were positives to the hybrid. We are now hybrid. So, I think we have the best of the three. That's just my personal opinion. But in being so, two years ago, there really wasn't a lot going on, except for the fact that people didn't know where to go to vote. We had the issue of not enough polling places. And the fact that it was a new system. People were still, oh, do I vote for, you know, nine of them in a district where there was only three people running? That, it was confusing. So, I'm thinking that two years has gone by. I've talked to a lot of friends, neighbors, and people in the area. And, you know, our taxes have gone up. And again, I don't mind paying taxes. I mind paying taxes for stuff. I don't know what's going on. We knew that the high school was going to be 300, on average, $300 more a year for 30 years. Fine. I know what that's going towards. Whether you agreed with where it was, or where it was placed, or whatever else, you knew that that was coming. My, my taxes have gone up even more. Last year, they were talking about a five and a half percent increase that they made. What does this go towards? The answer is always, it was COVID, it was cost of inflation, it was cost of this, that, and the next thing. I don't think there's enough transparency and talking about what it is. And I don't think we have, we don't have a counselor in Centerville right now who wants to talk about the fact that, and I said this to you, there's 76 streets. There are maybe half a dozen that get done a year. If we do that, we'll be getting done with our streets somewhere, like I said, early 21st, 22nd century. We need to work on this. We need to evaluate how we pay and afford our living as a city. And that's always been what I've been for, running for city council. And, you know, two things the council does, budget and constituent services. And those two things, I believe that I can bring to our neighborhoods in Centerville more effectively than it is right now.
All right. So, you alluded to the conversation we had shortly after you turned in the requisite number of signatures. And I believe it was close to 5:00 PM one day, which is when I always check with the election office.
Yeah, I know.
The new development.
Again, I was only joking about that, but.
But you, you, you did respond, and you actually gave me a statement. Now, others who had challenged an incumbent counselor kind of gave some vanilla statements. There was nothing really personal, just talked about what they're hoping to do. You were the only one that issued a kind of a strong rebuke of the incumbent counselor there. Since that time, Justin Ford sat in that chair a couple of days ago and, and kind of took it to Mayor Sokari Chow as well. But your statement at the time stood out. And I want to read it to you. Quote, "I felt two years ago that we had a chance to have real change in representation for Centerville, but we are in the same or worse conditions now, and our cost of living and quality of life is still suffering. We need real leadership, not just political rhetoric and members-only mentality in City Hall." Now, you said this about a counselor who has filed more motions than any other counselor. I might argue in history.
Yes.
You're saying that Centerville is not getting representation.
So, here's, here's my issue. You can, you can, you can file a million motions. It's the question of, do they get done? Do they get moved on? Do they get, do they get acted on? Okay? Putting that aside, I think that if you come across the bridge into Centerville, there are only really two things that have changed. One, the River Walk, which is done by a nonprofit group, which is great. I think it's, it's nice that they're doing it over. It has a little more exposure and all that. And that I know that the trash and the fact that our Centerville is, I hate to use the word dirtier, but that's what I see. I come home every night from work, and I come in and I drive up VFW and I turn onto Bridge. And Bridge Street looks horrible. They're now, it's funny, it's always around an election that things get starting, you know, get, get changed. But, you know, it's constant work, not just every two years or every four years that we need. We need somebody who will say, listen, why isn't this being done? Why isn't that being done? Not reactive, proactive. I was at a Centerville meeting the other night, the Centerville Neighborhood Action Group, and there were several candidates and several counselors there, which in my experience with CNAG is, you know, it only happens when there's an election. Of course, Cory was there, and they asked about a property about, which we had been, again, I was president of CNAG previously, and we had been working on. And he got up, walked out, made a phone call, came back in and said, oh, that'll be taken care of. Okay, that's great. I have nothing against that. But why weren't these things taken care of proactively instead of, he had to go to the meeting, and I would go to the meeting and report on what I'm doing? Not just, oh, tell me your problems. I want everybody to tell me their problems so I can work on them. But being proactive is really what we need. And the proactive part is the mandatory maintenance of our public assets. That's streets, that's sidewalks, that's trash bins being picked up. That's our, our, our parks and recreation areas being taken care of and serviced when it's needed, not after six months of complaining about it. That's what I see as true service.
One of the things I've seen, in fairness to Counselor Robinson though, is that he has made a lot of motions about parks, about improvements and whatnot. These are things that were traditionally neglected for, for many, many years. It was one of the driving reasons why a lot of people supported neighborhood representation, because they felt Centerville was getting, you know, the short strip, South Lowell, et cetera. And Counselor Robinson fought for like equal distribution of ARPA funds, especially when it came to parks and open spaces, whereas the original plan, I believe under then-manager Donahue, was going to put a significant percentage into Shed Park and not enough into the other neighborhoods. And it appears now that each of the eight districts is getting an equal amount or close to an equal amount.
Well, yeah, I'll, you know, I know there are things being done, but I'll believe it when I see it. It's just personally, I've heard those promises before. I've seen those promises and, and, you know, it's great. I think that that's great. But at the same time, we can't always rely on ARPA funds. That was a one-time issuance of funds. I think that, again, we have to get our house in order. And I don't see any of the counselors doing that. I don't see Counselor Robinson or anybody else calling into question how much we are paying to take care of the 26 other schools other than Lowell High. We know how much we're paying for Lowell High right now, but we don't know about what we're doing there. We don't hear about, what are we doing about, you know, they talk about the brownouts being ended, but they put money into the fire department. Great. That took care of the issue. Now, what are we doing so we don't get in that situation again? That's more of my worry, because what happens is, is everybody gets, it's, it's, it's a human condition. You get what you need and what you want, or some of what you need and what you want. And it ends up, you forget about it, and it goes into the, you know, the distance. It's like when you're fixing your own house. But you forgot about the fact that you need to look at it two or three years down the line, or even six months down the line. So, and if you're wondering what I'm whacking at, there's a gnat in here and I'm like, whoa.
Flying around for a couple of days.
Yeah. So, well, he's a viewer. He's a listener.
He's one of the 100,000 on the website.
Probably a couple of thousand of his friends too. Anyway, but he, I just, I think that we're not looking at it from a, I look at the city as a business, just like you should with any governmental or anything, any other institution. We're not the federal government, so we can't make our own money. That's one of the good things about local government is we have to live within our means. This year, they were talking about raising taxes again, because they couldn't make the budget work. And that scares me, because, you know, for two years, we really had nothing going on. And we augmented, used virtual reality and Zoom and all that. But there should have been some decrease, and there should be some money somewhere. Don't see it. And one of the things that I believe is fiscal responsibility. I don't see that in the council right now. I just don't. And a lot of people have told me that, and a lot of people that I met doing nomination signatures. And by the way, that's my, my favorite part of the whole situation, because you get to meet and greet people. So, I will be doing that, by the way, as a candidate from time to time, and I'll get that out there on my site. But one of the things they told me was, you know, why is it so much more expensive today? And nothing has changed. Again, I always say, what's, what's horrible is paying high taxes. What's even more horrible is paying high taxes and not knowing where it's going. So, that's really where I'm, I'm coming from.
Is your issue the amount of the tax increases, which folks have talked about 9%, I believe, over two years?
Yeah.
Or is the fact that you don't believe it's been spent properly? Or the third option that you don't know where it's really going?
I think it's, I think it's a little bit of two and three. I, I, here's the thing. Taxes, unfortunately, we have to take care of the roads. We have to take care of the assets. And that's the other thing is, if there are assets we have in the city that we're not going to take care of and we don't need, why aren't we getting rid of them? Or why aren't we making it so that, you know, properties that we own that have been sold to us, let's be more proactive about getting rid of it, because we're not in the business of real estate. We're in the business of making sure the assets that everybody uses are taken care of. So, I'm not against a tax increase. If there's a tax increase and it's for things that are needed, I'm absolutely for it. But when we don't know what it is, it's crazy. It's, it's, you know, 5 and a half percent, 9 and a half percent. You know, what are these things towards? And I'll give you an example. A lot of the meetings with the Rourke Bridge, okay? I'm glad things are moving forward, but they should have been moving forward sometime in the late 90s. And they'll, they'll give you excuses of why they weren't in the state and the federal and this, that, and the next thing, money and all of that. But when it comes down to it, I've heard a lot of people ask me, and I know that's out of my district, but it's a great example. They ask for, what is it going to, how long is it going to take? When is it going to start? And what is it going to cost? Well, they can tell you when it's going to end supposedly, but they can't tell you what it's going to cost, because we're just estimates right now, just like the high school. Well, give me an, you know, an educated idea of what it might cost. And people are upset that they have no idea what they have to prepare to pay. Remember, a lot of our citizens are on fixed incomes. And a lot of us can't determine how much we make. It's set every year. So, you have to be ready to make those cuts so that you can pay your taxes and pay your water and pay all of that. So, I'm really just, I'm disappointed that the council still hasn't looked and said, what are all the things we have? Why can't we, you know, tighten our belts and see what we can do? And add people and resources where we need them, not, I go back to the, the school. A lot of people are mad about how many people were added at triple-digit, actually six-digit, but I call it triple-digit because I put the K at the end of it. Six-digit salaries. Don't get me wrong. That's great. But are we living within our means? Are we putting people in places that we really need? And have we really searched for the right people to bring in? So, those are my questions.
You brought up the Rourke Bridge. It just kind of hit me that three of the main bridges, three of the five main bridges in the city going over the Marimac are in your district in some way, shape, and form. In Street, Willet, Bridge, Street Cox, and then Hunts Fall. And I always forget the name of the, who that was named after. But
But everybody.
The other two have just been redone within the last decade. Is it time for maybe the state, and with some help from the feds, to look at any of the bridges in your, in what would be your district?
Well, I know that they just talked about bringing in money the other day as far as bridges in other areas, but they never talked about the Cox Bridge, the, you know, the Ulele Bridge and the, what's the third one?
I call it the Hunts Falls Bridge, but I know it's named after somebody.
My wife and family always called it the Hospital Bridge.
The Hospital Bridge. That's right. The old saying.
Yeah. Yeah. So, those ones. But of course, we, we call them Bridge Street Bridge, the Elephant Bridge, and the Hospital Bridge. But anyways, yeah, I think it's time that we looked at that. Any, I mean, we have a lot of, you know, again, it's anything like that. We have that bridge. Cox Bridge looks great compared to what it was 10 years ago. But are we maintaining it? That's my question. Are we maintaining it? We don't know that. I don't hear about maintenance. I hear about, oh, well, this place hasn't been taken care of for X amount of years, like the streets, the roads, the, the sewage, and we're doing it. Good. What are you doing about the other things? Like, again, I bring it back to the high school, the 26 other schools and buildings that the school department owns. What are we doing about it? Are we upgrading them? Are we taking care of them? What's the future plan? Saint, the St. Louis property. When I was at, was still in CNAG as president, one of the things we had suggested was that the city of Lowell look at taking one of the schools. Didn't matter if there was one in the back or the one up front, the elementary or the high school. It didn't matter. But use one of those as a school to relieve the stress on the others so that you do the work on the ones that need works, the Green Alge or the Robinson or whatever ones, okay? That was ignored. It was development. We want to have, you know, housing and all that. And during the election, during the campaign '21, all three of us had said, well, there's need for affordable housing in the area. And my problem is, is that after the election, the, and this is what happened at the first meeting of CNAG after that, my opponent said, oh, we don't, we don't have a need for, there's enough affordable housing in the area, apartments. We need market level or above-market level residences. And it's those type of things that make me disheartened about things, is that we do have a need for that. We also have a need to not build on top of each other anymore. I think Centerville, Lowell Centerville, if you look at it, everything's built on top of each other. There's really no land left, especially when you go to 10th, 9th, you know, 6th, all of those. They're right on top of each other. And so, we had an opportunity maybe to actually relieve that stress and actually put up some new affordable housing, and it just didn't happen.
Right. Perfect transition. By the way, we were chatting with Marty Hogan, candidate for Lowell City Council in District 2, the Centerville neighborhood. He is running against incumbent Cory Robinson. All right. Regarding the need for housing, et cetera, and then some recent breaking news that continues to break even as of last night, ADUs. It didn't happen at the most recent city council meeting, some procedural things. But at some point in the next couple of weeks, next month, the city council will vote on whether to allow ADUs, accessory dwelling units. If you were sitting on the council, how would you vote in that vote?
I would vote against it. And here's the reason why. I think that we have a history in Lowell, especially on my street, and I learned this when I first moved in, of what used to be called rooming houses. This brings me back to the days of rooming houses, where you could put up a little room and rent it out. And people did it illegally too, for the longest time. I'm sure there's still people doing it illegally. But I think that we do need housing, but we don't, we need the right type of housing. We don't need, let's jump at this idea, because it's something that might relieve the stress. It's not going to relieve the stress. It's going to cause more congestion in areas that already have enough. As I said a few minutes ago, we need to have, they talk about the plan, the Lowell Plan, the new Lowell Plan, the, the plan. The plan should be to look at open space and using some of that, because you don't have cars there. You don't have people parking there. You don't have, and you have space to put in the infrastructure. The second thing I'd like to add is, we need to look at, seriously, how much of the grid, and I talk about grid, electricity. We're talking about sewage right now. Big, big subject. How much are we using of that? And are we beyond our capacity? I believe we are. I think that, you know, in order to do this, it has to be a holistic solution. We have to look at those things as well. And again, that's going to cost money. People don't like that, but that's going to cost money. And if we do it right, we can advance the city and build in the proper way and make sure that we can accept people coming in who are working, who are, you know, coming to the area to be part of our community. And I think that that's.
So, are you a no vote, to be clear, on ADUs in any way, shape, or form? Or are you, like many of the counselors are saying, I'm not against them, but I require certain conditions? Is, it almost sounds like you're a no, period.
I'm going to tell you why I'm a no. And it's a solid no, because when I was, a lot of it comes from growing up in Boston, but growing up in Boston and then living here, we talk about the, you know, the rules and the abatements and the, not abatements, but the, what do you call it? The amendments to, and the, you know, changes in the zoning that you have to go through to get a place built. Over in Centerville, I can't tell you how many times on, on the CNAG board, we dealt with people trying to build on parcels that are too small. And many of the times, it went to the planning board, it went before somebody, and it always got approved. Very seldom it didn't. And the problem there is, is it wasn't one, one appeal for it. It was several things. It wasn't just the space. It ended up being a fire issue. It had to do with this, that, and the next thing. We make exceptions all the time. The exceptions should be the small part, not the rule. That's why they say it's the exceptions and the rule. The rule should be enforced when it's needed. And I don't see that with the ADUs. If they put it into law, it just bypasses another, another step of the process. People already try to make ADUs, and they get approved for certain things. So, I just think that it's, it's a slippery slope towards making, and here's the other one, quality of life. I'm all about quality of life. If you make somebody live in an eight-by-eight cell and make them pay $200,000 for it, there are some people who are, wow, it's, it's the hip thing. I'm going to do it. It's not quality of life. We want quality of life in Centerville. I know that everybody in Lowell does, but I want to focus on what the people in Centerville want. And again, that's why I'm running in Centerville. Otherwise, I'd run citywide. I'm running in Centerville because I believe in the people and I want what they want.
All right. You brought up the St. Louis School. Last Friday, we reported here at Inside Lowell that Governor Healy was looking at the St. John Dark School up in Pawtucketville as an emergency shelter for migrants. The governor's office quickly reached out to me and said, that's no longer under consideration, which was an admittance that, yes, we were considering it.
We were looking at it, yeah.
Since that time, the governor has declared a state of emergency. And she cited in that letter that she's going to use every power granted to her as governor under an emergency status to deal with the migrant crisis, which is, we're now finding out the sheer scope of it, and we're going to get into that in a second. I, at the time, I heard about the St. John Dark School. I also heard the St. Louis School was also being looked at, was told, hey, listen, that's under agreement. There's a, someone's got a development plan, whatever. As we've seen, developments fall through all the time and new uses get used. And if, if the state comes in with a big checkbook and says, we'll buy this property from you, I can't blame the archdiocese or any developer who may have purchased the rights to it, or whatever the case is, from saying, you know what? I'm out. Give me my money. I'm not dealing with the zoning and planning and whatnot.
Yeah.
Could you see a scenario where you would support any one of those St. Louis School buildings being used as an emergency migrant shelter?
You know, I was listening to the radio on the way over here and talking to people, oh, this is an emergency. And I'm thinking about this, you know, we have so many homeless already. We have homeless veterans in the state. And I'm going to talk about the state because you said the governor. But we have homeless veterans everywhere. I would be 100% for having nonprofits such as CTI, somebody else, use that land and for those, for those reasons. But again, we need to take care of what we have right now. I think people forget about that. Everybody will say that it is, it is a great thing to help people. Yes. I'm a Catholic. I'm a Christian. I believe in helping people all the time. I'm a Mason as well. That's the one thing that we always do, is that we're for helping. But you cannot, if you help somebody or a group of people beyond what you can afford or do, you won't be able to do it for very long. And that's what we're ending up doing, is we're taking in people that, we've already got an issue. We've got an epidemic here, and we need to work on it for our Lowellians or our Massachusetts citizens. I can't see pushing that forward if it went above helping somebody who's already in the pipeline doing that.
So, to add a little more scope to that, we discovered last night that in a letter to the Director of Homeland Security, Alejandro Mayorkas, Governor Healy spelled out some specifics that she left out of her Declaration of a State of Emergency specifically. In March of this year, there were 68 families seeking emergency shelter through this system. And let's be honest, they're pretty much all migrant families, okay? By July last month, that number was more than 100. In March of 2022, that number was only, quote, only, only 25 families per month. Those are staggering numbers. Do the math. 2,000 a month, which we had reported, 100 a day is actually 3,000 plus a month. That's over 36,000 people per year. Here's the more interesting part. The cost of this, the governor tells Secretary Mayorkas, more than $45 million per month. So, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is currently, with the situation the way it is now, not even what's about to come, spending $45 million per month to house, support, care for, feed these migrant families. That's, again, simple math, 45 million. I won't even go the over. I'll just go.
No, that's 45 million.
Times 12 is 540 million dollars. More than half a billion dollars.
What's half a billion dollars?
Would you rather see that money spent towards other shelters for people already, be it the homeless shelters, mental health facilities, addiction treatment beds?
Veterans, yeah.
Veterans. Again, would you fight back against any of these efforts?
I would. So, here's, again, it's a federal level thing. So, and a state level thing. I'm trying to run for Centerville. It's going to affect us, because low man on totem pole gets, you know, the weight. I think that we. Um, I think that we need to really get our, our, our house in order. And uh, you know, $45 million a month, can you imagine how many people we could take off the street and actually start rehabbing? And I, I've said this to other people, homelessness is usually a mental uh addiction or a uh, um, it's usually mental um health or an addiction issue. There is a small group of people in the population that don't adhere to the normal living situations that we do and they do that, but it's very small. But the people that we could help with $45 million, it's amazing. Um, even if it's just over the state, you know, the whole state. Um, i- it's ridiculous that we have a problem and we wanna add more to it. Um, I think Centerville, again, we talk about adding more housing. There's only so much open room in the whole city. Forget about um Centerville that was built for a, a population of uh people who worked in the mills originally, that it was very small, you know, cramped, put together. Um, not affluent, you know, no affluency. So I think we're putting the wrong emphasis on things. Um, yeah, I would use it definitely somewhere else, yeah.
And I apologize for, this is a national.
That's a national thing, but national effects, local.
And that's what I, I'm trying to get people, because people say to me all the time, why are you focusing on, on the border and this? And I'm like, because it affects you. And, and here you say, this number of films, and you know a good number's gonna be relocated into Lowell and communities like Lowell, if the governor has anything to say about it. That affects your housing, which we're already struggling with. Uh, your schools, which are already bursting at the seams at the elementary and middle school levels, those are affected. It, it, it puts a, a bunch of issues on and I, i- it's funny, you, you wonder like as a community, do you have any ability to stop? But what could a lowly district counselor like Corey Robinson or Marty Hogan do about it?
You can stand up and say things.
I noticed the people at Martha's Vineyard while, you know, bringing, bringing baked goods, uh, managed to get the migrants out of there in 36 hours. Can Lowell.
It's all about what it looks like, right?
Can Lowell withstand such a, an effort and should Lowell unite to fight such an effort?
So I, you know, uh, when I was in college, I had an economics teacher and he once said to me, there's only N, and they always use N for variable, but N amount of goods and services in the world. So meaning, there's only so many resources. There's no infinite amount of resources. So, the question becomes, yeah, we can bring people in. We can, we could probably, you know, set up things in phone booths. I mean, houses in phone booths. Uh, you could probably put people, um, you know, they talk about using the empty malls and the empty commercial spaces. However, all right, when the economy gets better, which I'm hoping it does someday, um, it, it's not bad, but it, you know, if business thrives, where are you gonna put the businesses again? There's only so much space for everything. So, uh, that's my concern. They talk about that in Boston, you know, put them in the high tow, the high towers in downtown. Great, what happens when the businesses actually need those back? They're gonna force the price up so much that you can't afford to put the people in there and you're back to square one. It's gonna happen. So we need to have a holistic uh solution to this, but bringing in more than what we can deal with right now is just, you know, crazy. It's just the, i- it's, we do the same thing over and over again and expect a different outcome.
Yeah, insanity. Preach. Uh, lastly, because we've gone over 30 minutes, uh, the, the homeless encampment, tent cities, whatever you wanna call them, cleanups, including the dog park, which drew a lot of attention. That's in your district. Uh, do you support the manager and the administration's efforts to clean those camps and the way they went about it? Or would you have searched for a different solution?
Here's what I don't understand. You go from a, a, basically a laissez-faire situation where they let them be there for two years or a year, whatever, all right? Let them do whatever they want, we can't move them and then we basically go in there with bulldozers and force them out. Do I think they should be there? Absolutely not. However, there are better ways to deal with this. And uh, one, humane ways, two, um, safer ways, and three, a way that you um can basically work with people. Um, I'm a PR background. You wanna work with your stakeholders. Your stakeholders are your residents, right? I don't think anybody wants to see anybody being thrown out of someplace and, you know, where are they gonna go? What, are you gonna move them to the middle of the street? Uh, that's what I, I, you know, you move them out of there, they're gonna be up in Wachusett Street. They're gonna be on 6th Street. They're gonna be wherever they can find. Here's what I think, again, I go to holistic uh solutions. We need to think of this as, no, it's not one contract where we go in and we take care of them and we, you know, try to rehab them in 30 days and then throw them out again. No, this has to do with a long-term solution and those things we should be looking into. And as a counselor, I will. Um, and I will work with uh the local nonprofits and the partners to try to move that along. But do I agree with the way they did it? No, you don't go from, you know, cold to hot in one second. You know what ends up? You burn yourself, so.
All right, uh, you have a, you mentioned your site, website, social media pages. Let folks know, let our audience know how they can learn more about your campaign, the issues you're running on and uh they can expect to see you knock out on their door at some point too.
Yes, yes, so this face will be knocking at your door. Um, please don't call the cops, no. Um, my name is Marty Hogan. I'm running for Lowell City Council in District Two, which is Centerville where I live. Um, because I believe that we need um people who will work hard and actually uh do what they say they're going to do. Um, I don't want to just bring motions to the city council. I wanna tell you where those motions are and where we are in the process. I wanna make sure that you can meet me for a cup of coffee anywhere on any day. And that's not just the people that I know, but that's everybody. So I'm Marty Hogan, I'll be at your door. My website is Marty, I'm sorry, Hogan Four, the number four, Centerville dot com. Uh, Hogan Four Centerville dot com. And uh, I have a Facebook page, it's uh Friends of Marty Hogan for City Council. Um, please check me out, please come in, uh, ask me any question you want and you can directly connect to me from the site and from my webpage.
And that right there, folks, is what happens when you have somebody who's run for city council before they have their closing statement ready, they look at the right camera. Good job all done on that, Marty.
So everybody.
Were you in media or PR?
Actually, communications.
There you go. All right, you, you put it to good.
I saw that over there and I goes, wait a minute, that's mine, yeah.
Marty Hogan, candidate for District Two City Council. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Teddy.
Good luck on the campaign train. Hope, hopefully we'll see you for a debate with Counselor Robinson.
I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you to Marty Hogan and thank all of you for watching this podcast. I hope you learned a little, a lot about uh Marty Hogan's candidacy and you can make a more informed decision come November. Till next time, stay safe, everybody, for everybody here at Inside Lowell, thanks for being with us.